I think I'm honored.
We'll call this work session Monday, March 21st to order invocation given by Mr. Stewart and the pledge allegiance by myself.
Let's pray. Our Father in heaven, we thank you for this day and we thank you for many blessings you've given us. We ask thou to watch over these proceedings and they'll be pleasing in your sight. Please watch over the citizens, employees of Scottsburg as they go about their daily lives. Watch over the military, bring them home safely to their families. Guard, guide, and direct us so in the end we may all come to thee. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing tonight is recognize Scottsburg rec basketball teams.
Mayor.
Start with the KU girls, district runner-ups, and put some touches on the box, someone will call you up too. Jonathan Breland, Captain Breland, come on there. Alan Cullen, did you hear that? Didn't make it yet.
All right. Good luck guys.
Hi girls, I'm gonna call you, okay? Keep moving. Hey Alan. Cora Breland. Little Cisco. Adrianne Cullen. Peter Hart. Amy Cullen. Ellie Holland. Elliot Anna Cullen. If I say it wrong, I'm telling you. Ally been out here, but it's on the way. Lori Jones. Amber Grace Shelton. Julia Warhol. Elizabeth Ward. These are your KU girls, district runner-ups. Uh, Mr. Wood, Mr. Fannin, if you want to come up and talk a little bit about this thing?
No, I got to see him play a couple times.
First of all, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for giving us the opportunity to recognize these teams and their hard work. Uh, this team we got together as an All-Star team in the middle of the season, had kind of an idea that we were going to develop a young family team. Uh, we didn't have any idea that we were going to end up here today, I don't think. Uh, they persevered by being an undefeated, handful of American teams, and I kid you not, there were girls that was bigger than me, why bigger than Coach Breland there? Undoubtedly, they bigger. Uh, beat Boas. And uh, within one point, we're in the district championship. Represented really well, I'd say. Their character was impeccable, their class was shown throughout all their games. And uh, the future is very rough, because they're a very young team. Uh, they come back next year in KU girls, a lot of them will be. So look forward to what they have in store for us. Just keep working hard, y'all have a lot to be proud of. How to cut my camera. Who's buying your camera? All right, thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Good job.
All right, then our 12 U boys, Jeremy Harson, I think you want to stand in here in the box. Robert Fannin was another coach, so we'll call him uh, Jacob Fannin. Kobe Gentry. Colton Hart. Peyton Haas. And Xavier Hutchins-Simpson. Jordan Aker. Jack Limble. Ryder Limble. Bronson Sanders. Brayden Tally. And Connor Vaden.
So Paul Green.
Now the 12 U lost in the semifinals of the state district. So that got a long way. So, Fannin, you'd like to speak on them?
Sure. It's been a long time with this group of guys, some of them since they were six years old, some of them uh, just this season. It's been an honor and pleasure working with them. We started this in October for tryouts. So our season spanned five and a half months, which is longer than our varsity team, but it's truly a marathon, uh, the fact that they stuck with it. Some of the list of accomplishments, uh, this team did, uh, was pretty awesome. I decided to list them so I wouldn't forget any. They had an undefeated regular season versus ARPA rec plus competition. Uh, they beat a seventh grade team from Coleman, which is all very nice. And after approximately 10 times, if you try to go back and see, after 10 opportunities to play against SSBA's travel team between Coach Bell's team and Coach Harding's team, which this is a merged team, we finally beat them in our last opportunity, which was a big deal for us. We qualified in the gold bracket, uh, for the travel team tournament. And as far as our district tournament goes, we went to ARAF, which is, most of you know it, a tough place to play, beat ARAF, the hosts, then turned around and beat Hartzell, and then turned around and 25 minutes later, beat Boas for the district championship on a last second shot, uh, by Colton Big Shot Harding right there. So that sent us to state. Glad to represent this district to the state. In a nine hour period, uh, we had to play three games in nine hours. We knocked off Greenville, knocked off Dothen, knocked off Ah, by double digits, uh, which is an amazing run by any team. You see these teams now, they play a game, rest of the day, play another game. We had to play three straight. So, against adversity, which is what life's all about, right? Life's about, I talked to you about, you can be a good basketball player, a good athlete, but if you're not a good person, what I tell you, what does it mean? Doesn't mean anything. So the truest test of, are you going to be a good person or are you not going to be a good person? Every one of you passed the test. I couldn't be prouder of you. No matter what you did, about a trophy, not a trophy, you made it to the final four. We didn't get to play at our full strength, we can't do anything about that. But what we can do is how we respond to adversity. And every one of you guys did an exemplary job. Your parents should be proud of you, community should be proud of you, and I'm proud of you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I can't believe that, boy.
That's my baby. That's my baby. Here we go.
All right, you ready? I'm gonna go ahead and move on. All right, number two. Public hearing, alcohol license for uh, Melissa Robison, Robison doing business at Scooter's Sports Grill. This is time and place for a public hearing. Is anyone here for this? Thank you. Anyone here against this? No one here against this? Ms. Phillips, can you do the investigative report?
The applicant is Melissa Robison, type of license, restaurant retail liquor, class one, doing business at Scooter's Sports Grill, located at 3701 East Willow Street. There were two businesses surveyed with no objection, the nearest church and school footage requirements are met, license application is in order, health, fire, and building inspections comply, and zoning verification complies.
Okay, thank you. And this is just a change of ownership. And so... Anyone have any discussion on this? Hearing none, we'll move that to next week's meeting. Thank you. And that will conclude the public hearing. Number three, discuss vacating right of way on Broad Street. Mr. Little, you gonna start this and...
Back last fall, there was some property, um, sold between Broad Street and Bob Jones, and um, in the process of the survey, uh, for the property, there was a deed found that showed a deeded right of way from Bob Jones, uh, to Broad Street. Uh, I think Mr. Kennermer elaborated on it a couple weeks ago. And some of the, the property owners, uh, all the property owners have been contacted that this affects, um, and told us that, but about this meeting, and I think one in particular is here tonight to ask the council to vacate it, or there's some, um, language in the deed, and there's some language in Supreme Court ruling whether it even is a city, so we'll let Mr. Kennermer elaborate on that later.
You want, you want to go first?
Sure. This is a situation where, uh, for some property owners back in the 60s can vacate a right of way to the county. Uh, this property was not in the city limits at the time. The county never accepted the right of way. And it's been showing up on certain maps as a public right of way with questionable ownership since that time. The city's position is, it's never been a city road and never should be a city road or street. So the property owners, uh, would be in order to come to the council to request the council to vacate any right title and interest it has in this, which would thus split the property, uh, 12 and a half feet, well, one goes one side, one goes the other. And then if, uh, the owners had a good title counsel, which I think they do, after they took this step, they would then go the additional step to the county commission to get them to do the same thing. But I think this just clears up something that's, uh, 50 something years old, that's been a problem, and solves it.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak on this? As far as this piece of land?
Blake Smith, uh, for the property that, we went before the planning commission last week and got approval to open a business on that property that touches this vacated right of way. We asked it to be vacated because it will affect our business and how we'll have to adjust our buildings and everything else if this road stays active. Thank you all.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I have a verbal agreement that we're gonna give easements across some of this, some we can't find easements in some of these areas.
Okay.
So, the only objection would be if we can't get easements from the property owners that are on the city, with the city sewer.
And you do have a line that runs through that area?
We have a sewer line that runs through this right of way.
Okay.
Then if we're gonna vacate it, we're just gonna need to make sure we cover easements for water, sewer, and gas, ingress and ingress of water, sewer, and gas.
Okay. And no one sees a problem with that? Okay. Anyone else want to speak on this? Hearing none, we'll move that to next week's meeting. All right, number four, discuss vacating right of way on Sumner Drive. Mr. Little, you want to begin this one too?
There is a, a piece of property in Lakeview Shore subdivision, I think it's about 24 acres. Uh, there's the, the property owner, I think, is here tonight, and he's been requesting, um, from the city, he requests me several times to vacate this, a little sliver of right of way, I think it's 50 foot wide, that is coming off Sumner Drive. The only question that I don't know of, uh, is there's two adjacent property owners on each side. If, if that's vacated, who owns that? You know, there's maybe three claims into that. So, I don't know about that. Ms. Kennermer, own?
If a piece of property is gonna be vacated by the city, it's going to be vacated to the people on both sides.
Okay.
One person can't get it all.
So that may change the gentleman's request tonight, so...
Anyone else want to speak on this one?
I'm the property owner.
Okay.
The only access we have to our land is that right of way. Um, basically that land is supposed to be an extension of the subdivision, uh, in Lakeview Shores, uh, which we own, and, uh, currently building on it, and the only access is that right of way. And, uh, it's basically part of my driveway. And the city's not willing to maintain it, they don't know it. I have to pay for the culvert to get put in, I'm having to pay for the driveway and all the utilities. It's gonna cost me thousands of dollars on a piece of property that I don't own. And, uh, that's the reason why I'm willing to vacate that lot.
So the, so the driveway would be basically in the middle of this?
Yes.
Piece of property? Well...
The reason that the city owns that, it was supposed to be an extension of that neighborhood that was never done. And so Sumner Drive runs north and south, and that road just kind of connects my property to it. So that's the only reason that road is owned by the city, is because that was supposed to be a subdivision, which it won't be, it's gonna have one house on it. So, if you look at it, it just looks like a driveway. It looks like it's part of the driveway. It's not very wide, it's probably 75 feet long, but I'm having to pay out of my pocket to make that city road usable for me to get to my property, because they're not willing to put gravel down or do any of the, you know, utilities. Um, they put a meter in, but I'm having to run an extra 100 feet because of it. I've gotta do water, I gotta do sewer, gas, electric, and that's an extra 400 feet total between the four of them, plus all the gravel and the concrete stuff I'm about to have to pour. So it's just, I'm paying for the city road to be paid, basically all the utilities, but I don't pay for the territory.
Well, understanding the law, Ms. Kennermer, there's nothing, if we vacate it, it's split down the middle, there's nothing we can do about that.
It's just, it was drawn into the original plan for the subdivision, I guess that's Lakeview Shores. It was gonna be, uh, page six, whatever. But that, that phase was never done, so there's 25 acres out there. And this is just for access to that 25 acres coming from the original property owner, I guess the owner.
But this is just a city right of way, right? Not actually owned. And so, if we vacate just a right of way, it's just gonna be split, there's nothing else we can do. And so, only thing I would suggest, I guess, if you want us to vacate it, talk to the other property owner who's gonna end up getting the other half.
It's between two lots, it's not, it's just a sliver between two lots that other people want.
Oh, oh, both lots are owned by somebody else? Okay.
But this strip was never deeded to anybody.
Okay.
It was subdivision, it was reserved as an access in case they hit a later development. If you look, and if you look on the map, it says Sumner Drive, but all of his is a grass road, it's my property. So, if either of my neighbors were to vacate that lot, it would not be that long. So it doesn't really make sense for it to sit there and...
Well, that changes things.
It was never either of their lot.
Well, that definitely changes things, don't it?
Or we would be giving up a bit of right of way, we don't own the property.
Yeah, and that's, that's the hard part for our part, and, um, I mean, we can, I can have Mr. Kennermer investigate it more, but I, like I say, I, I don't know if you'll want us to vacate it when this is over with.
Who owns Sumner Drive, is what I'm asking. Because that is Sumner Drive that what I'm wanting to vacate.
It's probably sitting on two property owners.
They own Sumner Drive?
Well, I, I don't know for sure, but it could be.
The easement, it's board about two properties. City owns this property.
Yeah.
And it's vacated.
I don't know.
It would, would it go back to who the city got the easement from? No. Uh, this map, it appears to be titled ownership as well as a right of way. This map sort of indicates that, but I don't know that.
So could the city quit claiming that strip? Is it our property then?
No. Uh, that would be the city giving away property outside of the normal processes, and would be an effective...
That would be my next question, if we, if we could declare ownership of it and then sell it. You see what I'm saying?
So if you don't, you're gonna pay for all the utilities and the driveway. I mean, that's a city road, that's not paid.
The situation right now is, if there is a vacation, then half the property goes to prices, and half...
To the prisons.
Prisons, and, and half the property goes to the prisons.
That's what I was talking about.
And you would not really have access through that way.
Right. So if you leave it a city road and he, he maintains it, that, that gets you where you want to be. Yeah, but I have to pay for...
It's not an actual road though, right?
And they, and after they, when they put it...
It comes as driveway.
Yeah.
But you didn't have to pay for the driveway anyway. What, what, where you get it now, you're still paying. I understand, but I shouldn't have to pay to pay the city road and run utilities on the city road through my property.
Well, I don't think nobody's gonna make you pay for a city road, you're curbing gutter and all that, that's through driveway. Yeah.
That's Sumner Drive currently is what that is. And I would be paying to build a road that I don't own, and utilities that I, you know, it's, that's the city road.
This is not Sumner Drive. This is Sumner.
This is Sumner.
What would be your result if, uh, if you didn't have access? What would you have to do then?
If I didn't have access.
There's no, there's no other access.
There's no other access to your property?
That's the only access to it. If you look at it, it just looks like a little thin strip of grass. But it's hard to get in and out of it now, because it's all muddy and... You would have to go to the rub aid cord and dial it.
What is this road here? That goes around?
That used to be a logging road, I guess that was on the property, um...
Okay. It's not there anymore? Or...
I mean, it's a trail, a rapid four wheeler on it.
Okay. I mean, yeah, it runs like through these other lots, that's why I was wondering.
Yeah, I think that one of those lots was sold and, where it started, that logging road was where it was the Sumner Drive as their driveway and all, but it's, it's basically nothing now, it's all grown up.
Well, I, I can definitely tell you, this is something we're gonna need more time on. This is not...
And if you're out there personally, you'll understand what I'm talking about, it's...
Yeah.
I mean, that's the only access to my property, and that is a part of my driveway, but it's, it's a city road, it's Sumner Drive, it's not paid, it's not maintained, I've been having to mow it, um, and I'm in the process of building, so it's...
I don't know that a vacation is the way you want to go.
Yeah, I think...
That's what I was about to say.
I think everybody wants to try to help you out here, but that would definitely not be the right way to do it. And so, can you put this on the next work session, give me a couple weeks so that we can look at this and try to come up with something different? Okay?
Right now, if we vacate it, then, you know, half of it will go to the adjoining property and the other half to the adjacent properties.
And then you're stuck.
And that's fine, I don't care. It's just, I need it to be wide enough for my driveway to work, and I think if you split it between three of us, my driveway won't be as good as this.
It won't be three of you, it'll be two.
It'll only be those two.
Yeah.
You gotta buy a boat.
Unless, unless you worked something out with those two people, and we vacated it, and you worked that out to buy that from them after we vacated it for a dollar, it wouldn't be our, you know, that's what I'm saying, it wouldn't be nothing to us once it's vacated, once you had that worked out. But understand, if we vacated it, it would go to those two. Okay. But I'll put it on the next work session, and give us a couple weeks to look into it and go over this a little more. Thank you. All right, number five. Discuss airport director salary. Mayor, can you go over that a little bit?
Yeah, Mr. President, um, we made, or y'all voted to make, uh, Mr. Sandlin permanent director last week, and thank you for that, he's done an outstanding job the last several months in reviewing the salaries, um, and to make it commensurate with other department heads. My recommendation is a salary of $51,000 per year.
Okay. After looking at all the department heads, the mayor's come back with a salary of, anyone have any questions on that salary? Or any other suggestions? All right. We'll move that to next week's meeting. Thank you. Number six, discuss monitors for Scottsburg East Pond Civic Center. Mr. Seaborn's not here, so I'll go over that a little bit. Uh, you'll see in your packet in front of you, the cost to put two more TVs and all the equipment it'll take to mount those and run all the wiring. He has a projected total of $2,840. And of course, the, uh, Jackson County Sports Hall of Fame has offered to pay for part of this, and even up to all of it, if that was the case. My suggestion would be to split it down the middle with them, unless anyone else has another suggestion. I believe the city should have a little bit in this. And this, they will be used for other things except, you know, other things besides theirs also. Anyone have any questions on that or suggestions? Hearing none, we'll move out to next week's meeting also. All right, number seven, discuss the lighting at Bonham Walking Trail. Mr. Oloneese? I'll pull that up for you, too.
So at the request of, uh, Mr. Bailey and the, and the mayor, uh, worked up a plan for the lighting for the walking trail. Uh, the, uh, area on the drawing that you see there, everything in black by Hero's Drive, uh, is presently lighted, uh, by floodlights that are mounted on the telephone pole, which is right there adjacent to the road. The very back part of the property, on the far left, which you see in yellow and red, uh, is by the woods, and it is not lighted. And, uh, this, uh, this proposal for lighting this, uh, walkway would extend the lighting, would, would light the entire walkway, all the way from the tennis courts, and if you'll scroll down just a little bit, all the way behind, uh, the Veterans Memorial Park, uh, all the way behind the, the VFW Post Home, and all the way to the Veterans Baseball Complex. So the entire walkway would be lighted all the way between the tennis courts and the Veterans Complex. Additionally, uh, the Veterans Memorial Park has purchased, uh, 22 additional Ballard lights, and those will be put on the walkways internal to the park. So all of the walkways in the park will be lighted, this entire walkway, uh, will be lighted. It'll be, it'll be an extremely, I think, beneficial thing and, and welcomed by the citizens of the community, uh, who, you know, whenever I'm out there working or doing something, uh, people use that, um, that back walking trail, the new walking trail, connecting it, and, uh, using, of course, the city walking trail. So it's a, I think it'll be a great addition to the city. Uh, total cost is $32,000, and, uh, I would be working with the, uh, power board, uh, on overseeing and, and the installation of this.
Let me give you a little insight, how this came apart. I was approached by a few people who walk there at night, and a few ladies, and, uh, with complaints about, you know, you get on the tree line back there, it's pretty dark and kind of sketchy. And so they asked me about putting a few lights up, and got with Mr. Oloneese, and Mr. Oloneese came up with a master plan here to do the whole park. So, this is the plan, and... Open it up to questions or suggestions.
I too had some complaints from people that walked over there, how dark it was towards the, the tree line area.
It'll be a low level of lighting, I mean, it's not like it's gonna be a, a football stadium, but it is, it will be lighted, yes.
And I'm sure it will complement the memorial park lighting that's already, already in place.
Yes, yes, it will. It, it'll really tie in and complement that, uh, by extending it behind that, which, uh, was part of the plan, I appreciate the mayor, uh, comments on that and supporting that. So, it, uh, the, the whole area, the, all of Hero's Drive, and especially this entire recreation area is really, really benefit it, and, uh, make it very, very, even more usable and used than it is now.
And this project, you know, of course, the power board and street department will all be involved in this also.
So these will, these...
So, these will, these lights, they'll be the type that come on at dark and go off in the day.
Yes, the photocell and all LED. About, the lights are not real high, 20, 25 feet high, so it's not like it's a big stadium light. So, it'll, it'll blend in nice with the, with the area and with the park and with the walkway.
Anyone else have questions, or?
What kind of light poles do you use?
It's a, the light pole, it's a square steel pole. It's just a low-profile, it's not ornate, no. It's a four, four-inch square post. It really just, it's the same light pole that is on the parking lot of the Veterans Memorial Park, that parking lot.
Any other questions? Not, we'll move that to next week's meeting. Thank you so much. Number eight, discuss various, various ordinance changes. Start off, Mr. Little, with the changes. You have in your packet, the birth sheet, will be changes to zoning ordinances.
These are some changes that we've discussed with planning commission back in December. I won't read through all of them, unless you want me to, I will. But if you've got any questions on them, the one is the campers, travel traders, and recreational vehicles. That was reworded to help with having those installed in commercial districts. We've got some in some commercial districts now, just trying to have something where we can try to control that. Number two is the rear setback for residential lake lots. This is for newly platted subdivisions, this is not for current subdivisions. So, any newly platted lake subdivisions, the rear setback will be controlled by TBA and not the zoning requirements for that. Number three is to include alcohol sales in both manufacturing districts of the lot and heavy manufacturing M1, M2. Number four and five is something that we've had a hard time controlling. If someone goes and puts a privacy fence up in the yard, we, we have no idea. It may be two months, six months down the road, and an neighbor calling and says, "I'm looking at the ugly side of the fence." And you can't go back and tell them to tear it down and do it again, you know? So, this really just helps us. There's a statement in the zoning, it says, "The finished side of the fence shall face a budding property." But when you install a fence, nobody does that. So, you, we have no control over that, so that helps with that. And number five, or number, one, two, three, four, five, number five is the, the shrubs and trees required. I decided to remove that one, because we have no control over where shrubs or trees are planted when a fence is, is built. And then the last one is to clarify the word nuisance. Our zoning enforcement officer asked us to relook at that word and to try to clarify that so that it would be easier to, you know, have tickets and fines to stand up in court. Any questions on these?
Any questions about any of the zoning ordinance changes being brought? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Little, and then we'll move to the mayor for new ordinances.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to thank Josh and the ordinance committee for looking at these and these new ones that, that we're going to offer tonight as well. The first one is an ordinance regulating off-premise outdoor advertising signs and other matters. This one would regulate off-premise billboards. Would be a circle of land, one mile in radius from the northwest corner of the square, and an area 250 feet each side of the center right-of-way of Broad Street from Maples Avenue to Scott. And would provide for, would prohibit anything in, any of the outdoor advertising billboards in that, in that area. Mr. Little, is there anything you would like to add to that? Does anybody have any questions about this first one? Okay, the second one is an ordinance supplementing Scottsboro's alcohol ordinance and other matters relating thereto. This one is in preparation, we've had several inquiries into brew pubs and microbreweries and that kind of thing, and we had nothing in our alcohol ordinance that established that and allowed for them. So, we've introduced this as, as our, is our solution to that. It addresses micro distilleries, microbreweries, restaurant pubs. Mr. Kenmer, is there anything you would like to add to this one?
Uh, no, sir. It's based a goodly bit on Gunnersville and Huntsville.
And we felt like it would be a better thing to go ahead and put this in, get this in place, since we have had inquiries about some of these. Anybody got any questions on that ordinance? Proposal. The next one is an ordinance regulating open burning within the city of Scottsboro and other matters with respect thereto. This one is, I think everybody's aware, we've had a lot of complaints and concerns, and as we clean different areas, it creates a lot of smoke. We've had a number of complaints about the smoke. So, I asked Chief Neckless to sit down and put us something together that was, one, acceptable, and two, enforceable, and I think this, this does that. Chief, is there anything you would like to add?
I'll answer any questions. I think this is, I think this is a good benefit with some of the, excuse me, development that we have seen and will continue to see in terms of the environmental anchoring, which I think is causing a big problem. And this is still, like Mr. Kenmer and the mayor, this still gives individuals the ability, the flexibility to plant their yard and that sort of burn, you know, have a lookout or whatever. So, I think this is a good order.
Thank you, Chief. The last one is an ordinance further regulating the sale or use of fireworks within the city limits of the city of Scottsboro. This is an ordinance that actually establishes a timeframe that prohibits discharge of fireworks between 10:00 PM in the evening and 8:00 AM in the morning. And I think this will help some of the complaints that we've had in the last year or so. Chief, anything else you'd like to add to this one?
The only thing I would add to this is this does get worded so that it's not affecting shows like Goose Pond or the stadium or anything that's permitted through the state process with the fire mark, which the place chief and the fire chief were notified by law will know. So, we'll be aware of those before they happen, when they're permitted. It's going to affect those at all.
And that's all I have, Mr. President, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions on any of the new ordinances? Here and none, we'll move both of those to next week's meeting. Thank y'all for all your hard work on those. Alright, number nine, discuss the Scottsboro Airport Terminal grant application. Mayor?
Uh, this is something that our, our engineering firm, Barge, brought to our attention recently. It's a, it's authorizing me to apply for a grant. This particular grant will allow for expansion of the current parking area, parking places and additional asphalt and sidewalk, as well as increase our ADA accessibility. Mr. Sandlin, is there anything you would like to add to this?
I thought after the meeting, I was going to print out the sketches I have for, for Barge.
Okay.
Okay.
Again, this was a short turnaround, and there's no guarantee, but the grant amount is $250,000, it has a 5% match, which would be $12,500 for the city.
And this, we're just moving forward with the application right now?
Application process.
So, there's no guarantee to get it?
No.
Anyone else have any questions on this? Alright, we'll move that to next week's meeting. And number 10, discuss the Mint Creek Boat Dock. Mr. Little, I know we've gone over this a few times, but I think we're going to have to make a decision.
About three years now, the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources has been planning a project down at the Mint Creek area. I think you may have a site plan in front of you, but it's basically adding some parking. It's widening the road going in, it's, it's a one-lane road in some areas, and it's improving the boat launch, is where it's at. So, they've asked for a, it's a $500,000 project or a budget, and they've asked for a commitment of 25%, which is $125,000. That budget was put together about three years ago, we know what's happened in three years, inflation. So, I reached back out to them, and they've said as long, you know, as long as it stays within a $750,000 range, that will still be at 125. You know, if we can keep it in that range, that all our math will be is 125.
They'll cover the overage.
They'll cover the overage, yes, sir.
Okay. So, the city's match would be $125,000 to cover this.
This is similar to what we did in 2013 at City Park, if y'all remember that. We upgraded that area, resurfaced the Addison Park in, and added a double launch there.
Anyone have any questions on this? We're going to put this on next week's meeting. Thank you. That'll conclude the meeting, no delegation tonight. Mayor, we'll go to reports.
Okay, thank you. Couple of things, first, I'd like to say thanks to Wayne Moore and the street department. I don't know whether he's here tonight. And also to Jimmy Green and the water, sewer, and gas board for repairs that they've done to County Road, County Park Road. The street department completed their part this morning. They worked all night to get this completed, and I think they reopened it a little after 7:00 o'clock this morning. And in, talking to Mr. Little, I think the contractor says he plans to start on resurfacing April, the week of April the 11th, is that still correct? So, excited about that. Also, thanks to city engineer Josh Little and Wayne Moore. I don't know whether anybody's noticed it or not, but the handicap parking on the north side of the square, when it was originally put in, it was put in on a slope on the north side. And we have now moved the handicap parking from that slope up to the top. So, that should be a tremendous help to, to a lot of the handicapped individuals that need access to the courthouse. That's all I've got, Mr. President, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Dahl?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dahl?
I don't have anything, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Ms. Stewart?
I don't have anything tonight, thank you all for coming.
Mr. Ashburn?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Thank you. Just remember, we'll have a meeting next Monday night with these. And I don't have anything else for tonight. Appreciate everyone coming, appreciate everybody supporting our kids and what they mean to this community out there. I know there was a lot of adversity, and, and I know most of y'all saw all that on Facebook, and those kids represented Scottsboro well, so very proud of them. At this time, am I entertaining a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
Can I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? Here and none, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.